We call this regular meeting of the Kingsville City Commission to order. It's Monday, November 23, 2015, at 6:00 PM. Four commission members are present. Commissioner Luber will be here, hopefully momentarily. We open our meetings with prayer and pledges allegiance. If you care to join us, please stand.
Yes, sir. Father, we ask that you be here with us today and always. Guide us to do your will for the betterment of this community, the state, and the nation. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
The next order of business is approve the minutes of the November 9 meeting.
Motion will be approved.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Peckles to approve the minutes. Second by Commissioner Peckles. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Peckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Pique?
Yes. Next order of business is we have one public hearing. It's for an ordinance changing the zoning map in reference to lots 22 through 24 block 8, District Allegro, No. 1304 East Kennedy, from R22 Family District to C2 Retail District, admitting the comprehensive plan to account for any deviation from the existing comprehensive plan. This meeting is going to be opened up at 6:02. It is a public hearing. Anybody that wants to talk about this particular subject, you come to the podium, tell us who you are and where you live, and you have five minutes to talk about this subject.
Don't take the podium from anyone who is here. This is the vacant lot at the corner of Candy and 17th Street. It's right across the street from the KISD Harvey Elementary. Much of the zoning that surrounds this lot is either C2 or R2. We think our recommendation, and PT's recommendation was to approve the rezoning request. As the uses that are allowed in C2, in a neighborhood kind of environment, I think you want to be somewhat selective, and I think, we think that this is a good use for the neighborhood, especially with a school across the street. The applicant is here. Rosa is here, Morello. One of the things that we've talked about with her is how she actually develops the property that to me is more of an impact than the actual use of selling plants and garden materials. You know, it's going to be during the day, very little evening, so the neighborhood wouldn't be disruptive, somewhat on the weekends, but there's no school across the street. So, we've worked with her a little bit on her actual development. We think it's a good opportunity for her.
Has anybody complained?
No. We've had no phone calls. We did have one gentleman who did come to the Plankzoning Commission meeting, and I think he just had some concern about keeping the lot clean.
Well, I know that lot, and it's not clean now.
Right.
It's all rained, there's trash and rubbish there, and I know that others, they live on King Street.
Right.
Which will be right behind, and this will be in their backyard across the alley.
Correct.
And if they make this look anything like their yard on King Street.
Yes.
It's going to be a garden spot.
Correct.
They do wonderful work, and it'll be a wonderful addition.
That's right.
To Kingsville.
Well, this across from the school can do a lot of things, and you're right, it can add a lot to the neighborhood.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on the commission? Okay, having passed 5-0?
Correct.
All right. All right. Anybody else? Okay, let's go ahead and close this meeting at 6:04, and we'll go into a report from the commission's staff. Commissioner Peckles, do you have anything?
We're going to tag team it.
Yes, sir. As everyone should be aware, Thanksgiving is this week, so city offices will be closed this Thursday, the 26th, and Friday, the 27th. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be December the 14th. With regards to that, the deadline for agenda items for that meeting is December the 4th, and the deadline for staff reports is also December the 4th. And it might seem a little far out in advance, but with regards to our final meeting in December, historically, unless there was urgent city business, that meeting has generally been canceled, and we were just trying to see if there was any objection from the commission with regards to that. December the 28th is the meeting that usually gets put to the wayside unless.
You okay with me, ma'am? Anybody just really hard for us, I mean?
My name is, people have different travel schedules and things of that nature, but if we wait until the 14th, then it might be short notice.
We don't have any pressing.
Not that we're aware of it this time.
If something comes up, we can argue. Okay, let's just go ahead. Somebody has an objection going?
I have a few updates on a couple of different topics. First, just some pretty good news. So, we, the city received a refund check from Techstock. The city had allocated some funds for them for the Caesar drainage project, and they had some pounds. So, we received about $50,000 from them, and so we're going to go ahead and put that back into drainage projects. And so that's good, because I think we need as much money as we can get. So, that's good news for us on that front. I also wanted to take a minute to give an update on the care building. I had a chance to talk to Dr. Nix last week about that, and he's really excited because beginning in January, they've hired a gentleman by the name of Dr. William Warwick, and he's going to start in January, and he'll be the executive director for the Eagle Ford Center for Research, Education, and Outreach, and so he'll be based out of that building. So, he's very excited about that person coming on board, because that'll begin activating that space for the university. With Dr. Warwick comes about $1.3 million, and so they're going to begin using some of that money to hire some and pay for graduate assistant research work and things of that nature. So, he's pretty excited, you know, they're moving forward with activating that space for what it was intended to be used for. They had some challenges, but those have been addressed, and some of those, we're continuing to work together to address some of those challenges, whether it's, you know, maintenance issues or parking, you know, and just different things like that. So, he's excited about that beginning in January, and so we should, beginning in January, begin to see some more activity there from the university. So, that's good news on that front. On a different topic, I also wanted to touch base quickly on the tourism building. I know that was a topic of conversation the last couple of months, and we've, Charlie has talked to Techstock a little bit to get a better idea as to the timeline of their project and when we need to vacate the existing building. It looks like that's being pushed out for a couple of months, which is good news for us, because it gives us some time to move tourism, or the visitor center, I should say, to the new location. I know in the past it was discussed to move the existing buildings, but we've decided to not do that, and so we're looking at purchasing a portable building to put on that piece of property, so that in the future, if we have to move again, then we can just move the portable building. And so, the plan for that is to get the portable building here, you know, in the next 60 days, and that would allow tourism to move into the new building, and then we'll focus on getting rid of the existing building. Originally, there were talks about then moving to a temporary location and then moving to the on-site, and so doing it this way, it's smoother, because they just have to move once. So, that'll be a smoother plan for it, in my opinion. So, that's what's going on with that. And really, the only other thing I wanted to touch base on is there is a feature that was just added to the website that I want to make you all aware of. It was in the staff report, but it's important to put it out there and for people to know that it's there, but as of last week, there's a new feedback comment section on the front page of the website, and so anybody who is interested in submitting a complaint or just submitting general feedback, they can do that on our website. And so, you know, that may come in handy if ever anybody comes to you, and you can direct them to the site if they want to input it themselves, but that's a good way that, another resource that, you know, exists for people to submit their ideas on different things. And that's really all I got on my end, unless y'all have questions.
Anybody have questions?
On your, on the portal building, what's the cost for that?
So, that's something that we're exploring right now. So, the original budget for that overall project was about $100,000, and so we're not planning on exceeding that. And so, right now, for example, the different buildings that we're looking at, the prices range from $70,000 to $100,000. So, we're within that price range. You know, there's still going to be a cost of material for the parking lot, and so depending on, that specific cost may help us in determining the cost of the building. But one thing that we do have on the horizon is that we have had interest shown in purchasing the existing building, and so there may be an opportunity to make a little bit of money to help supplement the cost of the move by putting the existing building out there for people to put a bid on it and then worry about moving it themselves. And so, that's an option. We don't know right now exactly how much money that would bring in, but, you know, even if it's $10,000 or $20,000, you know, that may help us supplement a little bit of the material cost for the parking lot. So, the intention on the staff side is to not spend more than, you know, $100,000 to $120,000 on it, which was, we're more certain that that's going to be the cost going the portable route, because with the previous option of moving the existing building, there was a lot of unknown variables. There's a lot of things that could have happened with that move.
I'll tell you something, this is, I was always kind of concerned about that $100,000, moving that building and setting it back up, because you're going to have to pour slab concrete, and then it was, I think that was like, I think before it was all over, we were probably going to spend double, double that, and getting that building moved and reset. So, I think it's a good idea to do it this way. Great.
I agree.
Yeah. Hope you landscape it and make it look appealing to people that are wanting to come or look us over, spend some time.
Yeah, that'll be part of what we do there. We'll set up a volunteer, and we can all go fix it up.
Assuming that the existing building does not sell, and it's not, I mean, it's not razed or moved.
Right.
Should we go tear it down?
Correct. We have no choice but to tear it down.
Okay. Good deal. All right. Any other questions? Any anything from the commission? What we certainly had, go ahead.
Yes, I have these new occupancy permits that are given to businesses when they go in, either change the use of the occupancy or go in new. We have a landscape ordinance that goes along with giving the permitting for the occupancy certificate in the end, so they can move in and start business. But a lot of these places, they get, they prepare their landscape for their grand opening, they let the landscaping go, and they don't keep it up. And I see a lot of businesses that are doing that.
Ouchap on Armstrong and 6th Street is a prime example of that.
You know, they're not keeping up with the ordinances that were required when they first opened the business.
We need to enforce that.
We do.
I think so, too. It's a real problem. Businesses will comply with the ordinance initially, and then they just like, we're not coming back and enforcing that.
And I'm not sure, Tom, I don't know if you want to address it a little bit, because my understanding is, you're right. I mean, you know, there is, I'm not sure that the way that it exists provides for a way for the city to enforce that, because those plans are approved at the beginning, and so that ordinance or that landscape plan, you know, doesn't provide an avenue for the city outside of the community appearance standpoint to go in and enforce an appearance aspect of it. So, right now, you know, we couldn't go and say, hey, you know, your plan that you submitted, you know, said it looked X, Y, and Z, it doesn't look like X, Y, and Z. You know, we can't do that, but we can under the community appearance division, you know, right, do it from that route. But it wouldn't be based on the landscaping plan, is my point. But.
Just get, whatever works.
Yeah, yeah.
Or we could tweak that, too.
Turn the water off.
It's legally we can't.
Huh?
Legally we can't.
Oh. Okay. All right. Anything else?
Just a comment.
Sure.
Just, you know, we had a great festival this weekend. Many projects going on this weekend, and there's Susan, you know, Miss Martin, Leo did a lot of work to be successful this past weekend, and if you were here at the festival, I mean, it was a great turnout. I got it, the best I've ever seen, and, you know, kudos to you guys, you did a great job.
Absolutely. Everything was well done. We went to the rodeo Friday night, it was really good, and Saturday morning, we got to get there early for the, for eggs and sausage, because those lines got pretty long. They had a lot of people in King Street. And then, yeah, and then the downtown festival turned out well. So, I mean, it was, you know, there was a lot of good things happening in Kingsville. Good job by staff, really was.
Thank you all. I think that's what we saw in Beaver Grove this year and the past year, and both.
And the weather was kind of, you know, wasn't all that great, but it was, yeah, but still, people came out. All right. Anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to bring something out that kind of gave me a heartburn this past week. We just, as you all well know, we just fixed Wilson Street, right, Charlie? You guys did a fantastic job, you know, we were getting a lot of good compliments and stuff like that. Then I had a resident from that area call me, where the gas companies are there making holes on a brand-new street that we just built. So, I had asked the city manager to talk to Charlie, maybe we could, some way, shape, or form, if they already have a plan where they're going to be laying their new lines or whatever, your gas lines, see if we can coordinate this issue, so if we do a street, because I know they're not going to repair it the way it is, Charlie. You know, it's all going to be bumpy, and the holes here, holes there, and they're going to just go out there and patch it up, and pretty soon, we have a lot of potholes in there. So, in the words of the tax creators, you know, the investment that we did is probably going to turn out pretty bad in a couple of years when that street is, you know, we're going to have to go back there and repair it, so. If there was a way that we, in one way, shape, or the other, we can coordinate with those people, and maybe some other ones that we're not aware of, that we have a plan. What is it, a 20-year plan or a 10-year plan?
Both, 10 and 20.
Okay, 10 and 20.
10 is for all the poor streets, 20 is for everything.
So, since you have the plan already, you could try and give them a copy and tell them, hey, this is it. You know, we're going to build a brand-new street in this area, don't go out there three weeks later and start digging out there and putting your lines or whatever, so. So, if we can do that, that probably will avoid something as what is happening right now on Wilson Street.
Yeah, and just a quick comment on that. So, Charlie did meet with the gas company the day after we had the conversation, and they are going to work towards working, coordinating better together, but just a quick comment, and I've already made you aware of this, but one thing that we're also exploring is to establish the need for a right-of-way permit. So, for example, it's common practice for cities to require different utility companies to come to the city and request a permit to work in the city's right-of-way. Many cities charge a fee for that. We wouldn't necessarily be doing it for that purpose, but it helps us keep track of when these utility companies are coming and doing work on the city's right-of-way. We require them to come in, get a permit, and so with that would come then requiring, you know, some to tell us where they're going to work, how long they're going to be out there working for, and it also helps us from a safety standpoint, because some of the pictures that staff took of the situation that you're talking about, we had some safety concerns, because, you know, they had some equipment out there that wasn't properly combed off, or, and that sort of thing. And, you know, what this right-of-way permit process allows you to do is to also require them to follow certain steps to, you know, place cones, put a barricade, you know, to prevent somebody from just, you know, running into equipment or things of that nature. And so, that's something that's common practice that many communities have started doing. This was something that Charlie and his staff had already started the process of putting together, and this was just another example of why we should continue looking to establish that. And so, that's something we'll continue to work on, so that this doesn't happen again.
All right. Anything else? If not, then we'll go into public comments. It's an opportunity for anybody to come to the podium, tell who you are and where you live, and you talk back. Anything you want to talk to, talk about for three minutes. Okay. In passing, we'll go into our considered agenda. There are most?
One more.
There are second? Second. A motion made by Commissioner Peckles to approve the considered agenda presented, seconded by Commissioner Garcia. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Peckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Peña?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Pique?
Yes. We'll go into our record, and the first item is considered, introduction of an ordinance changing the zoning map in reference to lots 22 through 24 block 8, District Allegro, No. 1304 East Kennedy, from R22 Family District to C2 Retail District, admitting the comprehensive plan to count any deviation from the existing comprehensive plan. Anything else? This is an introduction item. Takes two hearings for this to pass, so this is the first one. Anything else? Anybody, anything else? I would say this also, that on that area of Kennedy, there's already a, what used to be a salon, a beauty salon that was across the street, and then that whole, that whole street is, there's a church and then the Boys, Girls &amp; Boys Club, so there's a lot, very commercial, but certainly not family type housing, so anyway. Anything else? If not, we'll go on to the next item, is considered final stations of an ordinance admitting the code of ordinance of the city of Kingsville, Chapter 8, General Regulations, Article 10 Streets and Sidebooks, to add street maintenance fee sections to establish monthly street maintenance fees for the purpose of funding the city's street system, establishing a street maintenance fund, and appeals process. Charlie?
After our previous city commission meeting, we, city manager, Ms. Aguirre, they were by E and I, met on the request and to look into the, into the nonprofits and the issue there, and so we decided that we're going to include all nonprofits as worded on the, and decided to help me out here. What is it?
This is this 501(c) Organizations.
There you go. Yeah. We addressed that issue there. We've been making some headway with our website, as city manager was discussing our improvements to the website. There are some more improvements on the street, our street improvement program and the street fee as well. There's a lot more information on the homepage. There's also the calculator for the non-residential on there as well. And then we're going to include the whole, the whole book, the maintenance book that we presented last year, so that everyone knows, get some education from what the, when their street is going to be fixed, of course, but also to be transparent of how we came up with the scoring and how a crack is formed and all that kind of stuff, how puddles is formed and all that, that stuff, and how we came up with the budgeted amount that we need. That's going to be included on the website as well. Pending right now, tonight, we're also, Tom is working and helping out with the mailer or the stuffer on the December's utility bill, just to give a fore, a fore notification that the street maintenance fee is going to be, or is looking to be enacted January 1st.
Okay. Any questions about this?
I have a question after this. Okay. My other question, have we heard, anybody in the city, have we heard any feedback on this? Tim wrote a pretty good article, which was ago, about people and using their voice. Have we heard anything? How to be?
Not, not really, and I spoke to Tim a little while ago, and Tim says that he could give a presentation on the street maintenance fee. He's heard it so many times, I know it's so many times about it, so, but it never fails, and we're going to get the documents once it starts.
I guess he does it on the community service.
Yes. Well, it's, it is kind of frustrating, because one of the problems we have in Kingsville is we don't have a lot of media, so it's, we do what we can, and I think we've all tried to spread the word as best we could. I've had some questions, but I've not had anybody come out and really object to it.
And by the way, this story has come out on both Channel 3 and Channel 6 before, in a positive light, and again, haven't heard any feedback. Been checking the Channel 3 and Channel 6 Facebook pages on it, and most of it says, yes, fix the street, fix the streets, and that kind of stuff, so that's the kind of feedback I've researched.
That was my only question, so it's probably in here.
Very valid.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you for considering that issue, and I think it clarifies a lot of things.
I did not realize there were that many, I thought there were only six of them. Turns out there were, what, 29?
29.
29? Yeah. Okay. Yes, sir.
Before I was really interrupted by El Garcia here, because I, in regards to the, to the maintenance fee for the streets, I've had a lot of positive feedback from a lot of people in favor of it, but also have had some negative feedback in regards to the people that are very, very low income, the people that are just getting a social security or a supplemental income from the social security administration, because I don't get only about $600 a month, you know, and all of this money is they're buying medication and paying their other utility bills, and what are all the things that's required to live? And to some people, you know, $60 a year is $60 a year. So, I have had conversations with individuals in regards to that, and we never figured out that. We're going to go with it, and hopefully, maybe next, next coming year, we'll look into it, and there's really a dire need where the, you know, some of these individuals are really, you know, hurting for those $5 that we make some type of an adjustment or something like that.
There might be other needs or situations to go on.
Commissioner Garcia, did you get something out of me to catch up?
A city employee told me today that perhaps, once we're in six months into this program, we'll start hearing a lot of complaints, because they're actually starting paying for it, and, which I agree, you know. We won't know until we get down the road with this.
Until you hit them in the pocket.
Until you hit them in the pocket, and then have people complaining, but I particularly feel that it's important. I know that it's going to hit a lot of people in the pocket, but that's what it's all about. I mean, when you talk about money, that's all it is, you know, but we do need to address the street issues, and there's, we're trying to do this, see if it works, and if it doesn't work, we'll do something else as we go down the road, but I think we're on the right track here, at least getting a program started.
Yes, sir. Thanks. Any other questions or questions?
Yes, just one more, but then I'll shut up. I've been hearing a lot of good, good comments from the employees in regards to our new city manager, so I think that's very positive, and I think that just hopefully, we will continue that way.
Okay. Anything else? This is an actual, we'll see how it goes with this one.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Luber to pass this ordinance, seconded by Commissioner Peckles. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Peckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Peña?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Mayor Pique?
Yes. Next item is considered resolution authorizes the city to submit application to the Office of Governor's Criminal Justice Division for the purpose of requesting grant funding to the city for the 2015 body-worn camera program. to have the city for the 2015 body worn camera program for all personnel for the Kingsville Police Department, anticipating. Keith, always good to see you.
Good to see you, sir. Phil, Commissioner, or Commissioner, not Phil. I think the, the item itself really explains what this is about and that is we're trying to apply for 35 body worn cameras and the associated computer space, about 30 terabytes of storage for those particular systems. We'd ask for more, but the grant only allows the first year worth of storage for the system. So, it's roughly approximately $45,482 with a cash match of 25% of $11,371. I have met with our finance director and we got together and we have been able to find some funds within our current budget that we'd be able to use and those funds have been moved into a fund for that cash match as well as gotten with our purchasing agent and we were able to get the lowest pricing brought through HGAC. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
The storage requirement for those body cams, are the, is that storage requirement going to be in the units themselves or is it going to be transmitted?
Actually, our current system has, they're actually 30 gigabyte hard drives that we remove and we hot dock. Basically, it's going to be a similar system. Eventually, we'd like to go to where, yeah, you get into the proximity and you're able to go ahead and download and stream it straight into the server. Of course, we have not been as fortunate as we have been in past years with some of our forfeiture funds and that can actually, it would have to be an improvement to our server system. We had earmarked approximately close to $40,000 a couple of years ago to be able to do that, but because we haven't been as successful as we have been in previous years, we have had to use that for other items that needed to be addressed. Ideally, that's what you want to be able to drive, as soon as you drive into the police department, it would actually start streaming not only your body cam, but also your mobile video system. What I'm trying to do with the current systems is I'm trying to, what we've done in the past is because we can't afford to buy everything at once most of the time, we try to kind of buy 10 to 15 systems a year. But, what happens is within that two or three year period, the system upgrades. So, now you're going, you're trying to keep one system to try to unify the entire project, but you end up, currently, we've got COBAN systems, digital ally systems, and some of the digital, we have three different digital ally systems that we're currently using. So, what I'm trying to do with this is keep it, we're going through COBAN, that's what we have, our newest mobile video so that it actually works together and we don't have to buy more infrastructure. Infrastructure, of course, is quite expensive.
How much is the server achieved?
The server in this case was roughly, $17,780?
For the server, that's part of it.
Well, you said you've been, in the past, you've been wanting to buy a server.
Well, we buy servers.
$40,000.
And we have different blades. Our system, we could buy additional blades for our server. It all depends on, but it is the market value that particular.
Okay.
That's what we're trying to address.
Any other questions?
Make a motion, we approve said resolution as stated in item number seven.
Second. A motion made by Commissioner, hey, need to pass this resolution, seconded by Commissioner Garcia and Commissioner Loubert. Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Commissioner Panha?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Loubert?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Mayor Piggay?
Yes, next item is consider a resolution of the city of Kingsville acknowledging the city participation in deferred compensation away in addition by ICMA. Yeah, how are you tonight?
How are you, sir? Any questions? This item is, if you, we would like to expand some of the benefit options for our employees. This will give employees an additional opportunity to participate in a tax-deferred program. Included in the packet with the memorandum has a summary of the company. It's ICMA RC, which stands for International City County Management Association Retirement The company was founded in '72 and it has over, it serves more than a million participant accounts and about 9,000 plans across the country. It offers retirement plan specialists to work with employees and includes opportunities to attend seminars, workshops, mobile apps for employees. In the packet, there's a little background information as well. The city has offered deferred comp plans to employees. Currently, we offer, it is what used to be called PepsiCo. It started in 1995, it turned into Nationwide. And we have, by adding an additional benefit, additional company, it won't negate anything with Nationwide. Employees can continue to participate, doesn't take anything from them. The city doesn't, we have no financial impact as a city. This is all 100% employee monies that they may want to contribute. I think the minimum is about $10 that they, if they want to start participating. And again, it does not negate anything with Nationwide. They still exist and they can spend any and participate.
All right, any questions?
Yes, Mayor, TMRS is that going to remain intact?
That's the city's mandatory pension plan?
Yes.
That is not, this is a...
Yes, I understand, I'm just clarifying that. So, all you're doing is giving the employees a different choice.
For their additional deferred compensation. So, TMRS is our city employee pension plan. So, the employees now have a choice or an option if they want to participate in a deferred comp, either Nationwide or this ICMA RC.
Or neither.
Or neither.
Or neither, yes.
I just want to ask another question here. What attracted you to this particular choice?
It was something that I asked her to look into. This is, this ICMA RC program is very common in the local government profession. You know, we have some individuals that are currently employed with the city that in their former work establishments were members of ICMA RC, but couldn't continue that here because the city wasn't participating with ICMA RC. And so, it's a benefit for those folks to continue contributing to their ICMA RC accounts. You know, in my biased opinion, you know, ICMA RC, because it's very specific to the local government profession, you know, the services that they can provide as a user or participant in the program are a little bit more, in my opinion, specifically tailored to local government professional. You know, when I was looking at, you know, coming to Kingsville, that was one of my first questions, you know, to Courtney and Diana was, oh, you know, do you have ICMA RC? Because to me, you know, that's important, obviously, because there's no financial impact to you, but for me, it's important to contribute my own money to my plan and it'll now help some current employees if they want to go back to contributing to that. And it'll also help us in the future, you know, as we look in the future and new people come on board, you know, it may help as a, just additional benefit to have that we have that option for employees.
So, it's just another choice.
Yeah, that's all it is, yeah.
Okay, I'm just curious to see where it came from. No, I don't.
All right, anything else?
Make a motion, we approve.
I could have just said me.
Second. A motion made by Commissioner Hennig to approve this resolution, seconded by Commissioner Garcia and Commissioner Beckles. Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Loubert?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Panha?
Yes.
Mayor Piggay?
Yes. You know, I meant to ask you before we started, can I, we do both of these executive sessions at one time or we're going to have to come back out and start the second one?
Well, you have to read the first one and we go in and then somebody will come out and then we'll announce this, starting the second one.
Great, okay.
Not everybody has to trail out, we'll just announce that we're starting the second one.
Just you. Well, I knew that person was going to be. All right, next item is we're going into executive sessions, pursuant to section 551.071 of Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney, exception, the city commission shall convene an executive session to seek legal advice from the city attorney regarding a matter in which the duty of the attorney to government body under the Texas Discrimination Rules of Professional Conduct and State law of Texas clearly conflict with this chapter. Okay, we're in next one, we're going to the session one.